Madam Chair, meeting's yours.
Thank you. This meeting will now come to order at 6:02 PM. Madam Clerk, please do a roll call.
Ian Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Edward Zico?
Present.
I'd like to extend a welcome to all members of the public joining us on Zoom. Mr. Wazika, how many are on the call with us this evening?
We are up to eighteen.
Excellent. Welcome. Welcome to members of the Town Council. Mr. John Arnett, our Finance Director, who is leaving us this week, and we wish you well, Mr. Arnett. To members of the School Committee, Superintendent Levis and Finance Director, Ms. Mangiarelli. Kathy?
Yes, I'd like to open our meeting too as well.
Yes, we're going to open it immediately.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patnod, please open your meeting.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm calling the open meeting for the School Committee at 6:03. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Kathy Patnod?
Here.
Dave Florio?
Present.
Luke Murray?
Here.
James Pearson?
Here.
Craig Levis?
Here.
Don Cowitt?
Here.
Darmin Mangiarelli?
Here.
Thank you. I'd also like to welcome Mr. Don Cowitt, Assistant Superintendent, for joining us. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Mr. Wazika, could you please share your screen with us? We're on Agenda Item A3.
Is everybody seeing that?
Yep.
Thank you. When I received my packet of council information recently, I had a very pleasant surprise, a Christmas and New Year's greeting card from the Lord Mayor of Coventry, England, Councillor Anne Lucas, and her consort Ray Lucas. I want to share this card with the members of the council and members of the public. At one point in time, I was told that Coventry, England is a sister town with our Coventry. In the 2011 census, Coventry, England had a population of over 316,000 people. I did a little Google research, and just to tell you a little bit about Coventry, it's a city in central England. It is known for a medieval Coventry Cathedral, which was left in ruins after World War II bombing. A 20th century replacement with abstract stained glass stands beside it. The collection at the Herbert Art Gallery and Museum includes paintings of local heroine Lady Godiva. A statue of her naked on a horseback is nearby. Next year, our council really should send a card to her. The only connection right now that I can see between this town and that town is that the Lord Mayor's first name is Ian, and so is mine. So that's the beginning of the connection for us. And next year, maybe I'll have a royal gown. Thank you, Mr. Wazika, for putting it in your budget next year.
I will do that, ma'am.
Thank you so much. I'll pay for it myself. Okay. Agenda Item Number Four. This is a discussion of the fiscal year 2021-22 Town Council Work Session on Municipal, Capital, and School Department Budget. This is our first discussion of the budget, so it's a very high-level discussion of our three-year projections for revenue and our three-year projections for expenditures. Our Coventry Charter Article Four, Section 4.07, and Charter Article Eight, Section 8.10, provide requirements to begin the process for developing this budget. I'd like to call on Superintendent Levis and his team to begin.
Thank you, Dr. Dixon. I don't know how to follow that Christmas card there. So I'm going to ask Ms. Mangiarelli if she doesn't mind, Mr. Wazika, if she can share her screen.
Already set up for.
Fantastic, thank you. We have a brief presentation. Like you said, this is a high-level conversation or discussion. And at the end of this, we will bring up our, we had shared it before with the Town Manager and Finance Director, our three-year projections, and we'll share that also at the end of this presentation. So can you go to the next slide, Sarah, please? And as you all know, I'll share tonight, I know Mr. Arnett, this is your last night. Ms. Mangiarelli will be leaving us as our full-time director on the 29th of January. But she's agreed to stay on with us and help us through the process of onboarding and new Finance Director, but also helping us, you know, work through the FY '21 and the FY '22 budget. So we're very fortunate. We'll wish her luck later on, though, not tonight. So just to start off, you know, our focus going into FY '22 is a real focus on social-emotional learning while academics is always important. You know, I don't think I have to say a lot about just how challenging these times are for all of us. And if we don't focus on the well-being of all of our community and our school community, our students, the academic component really is secondary because we need to make sure people are in a good place. So we're going to continue to focus on the social-emotional aspect as well as the academic. I had spoken to Dr. Dixon in one of the upcoming Town Council meetings. We'll have some representatives of our high school. They will present what's called a Vision of the Graduate. It's a document that we're going to use to drive the future of Coventry Public Schools. It was a document that was approved by the School Committee for the NEAS accreditation visit that took place actually right before, the week before March 13th, they did their visit. But it's really going to drive education. I think you'll see it drives education from pre-K all the way through our transition program. The School Committee had adopted a new mission statement. So that's also something we use to drive our budget. And again, I will coordinate that with, through Mr. Wazika and Dr. Dixon, a presentation within the next month. Because I think it'll be really important for the council, and again, to reiterate with the community. We all know that no matter what our best intends, our best efforts, and people are working extremely hard, our teachers are working probably harder than they've ever worked, and in all of our staff. There's significant impact that these times are having on students. And we're going to assess that, continually assess, look at what those gaps are, both in academics and also social-emotional needs. And well, it's an ongoing process, but we'll be working on that not only throughout the rest of this academic year, but also in the summer, looking at ways that we can close those gaps. And, you know, many of us are working with different organizations to look at, you know, interventions that we can implement to address those needs. And we'll be addressing that through our budget also. And then something we started the last few budgets is really making sure that there's equitable access of supplies, resources, equipment among all schools. And that's something that's important. You know, equitable doesn't always mean equal, right? There's a difference. And so we're going to make sure that our buildings have our administrators, our teachers, our students, which have what they need to be successful. And that's something that we've worked closely, we continue to work closely with our administrators, getting them and our directors much more involved in the budget process to look at what, you know, how we're going to address student needs. Next slide, please. So these are some of the factors that we need to monitor going through this process. State education aid. We all know that, you know, when we talk about local aid, there's a maintenance of effort, but that doesn't exist with state aid. State aid can be extremely volatile. We received like a $1.5 million increase on one year. The following year, we received about $800,000 decrease. So thinking of that swing is significant. And we're also concerned, we're not sure about the state aid right now. You know, there's some projections around state aid. But free and reduced lunch has a great impact on state aid. There's no incentive for people to apply for it because meals are free for everyone this year. So we really not sure how the state's going to treat that moving forward. Something we have to really be cognizant of the fact of how volatile state education aid can be this coming year. Local aid, again, at your last Town Council meeting, there was a recommendation for FY '20-21, about $1.2 million. The reason that we make this an issue and we push this, and while I'm appreciative that a budget's going forward, it's significant. And you'll see in our next slide that when Ms. Mangiarelli takes over the presentation, just why it's so important for us to focus on maintenance of effort. This reduction, when we started off by asking for one point, close to 1.9, and then the reason we said that we could accept the 1.5 was because we're using that amount from our surplus. So anything less than 1.5 just creates an additional structural deficit moving forward. And as you're going to see in the next slide, what's happened in the past, and it's nobody's fault here, you know, it's not about finger pointing, but it's our reality, and we need to fund education the best that we can moving forward. So we can continue to improve the product in the future for our students in this community. We all know how important, and I know nobody doubts how important education is to a community. That's why it's so significant, the local aid this year. One of the areas that we think may be a positive for us is benefit claims. Because elective surgery was postponed for so long that a lot of our claims, and obviously being self-insured, that will have an impact or can have an impact hopefully on our working order, working rate moving forward. And so, but we still have to monitor that because now that elective surgeries are back up and running, there may be, you know, numerous people going to have surgeries that they had put off for a while. So it's something we have to monitor, but could be positive. We had negotiated, as you know, we negotiated with our CTA, that was a significant savings of a half million dollars. We've also negotiated with our SRP, a Support Related Personnel Bargain Unit. We haven't brought that to the School Committee yet. Mr. Florio, Vice Chair, was part of those negotiations. We will be bringing that to our School Committee, and then we will be involving the Town Council. That needs to be also built for the council. And we've made some significant language changes in that contract that'll not only benefit us, you know, this year, but moving forward. And we appreciate both of our bargaining units coming to the table, willing to open. And again, we look forward to bringing that forward to closure. Our school lunch program budget's been in an area of concern for several years. We typically lose several hundred thousand dollars because of just the structure, not the contract itself, but there's some costs that are built in that only maybe six other districts in the state have. And we've been working closely with SEDEXO, but this has happened with everybody that's been, whether it was Armar or Chartwell. And this is something, even though, you know, our whole food service has been, while the food's been free, it's been, you know, in terms of how they market and their ability to serve à la carte. You know, it's been extremely difficult, challenging times for them. But that's something that we have to monitor, that we can't continue to lose money. And they can't, you know, nobody's going to continue to operate in Coventry and lose money. So it's something that's still on our radar and something that we've been working very closely with, but it's extremely challenging in these times to take much headway in that area. Our district tuition cost, you know, something that we all are aware of. I mentioned in a meeting we had the other day that we have a significant number of middle school students who've already put in to go out of district. We've had a significant number of our current high school students look at going to other high schools for next year. And, you know, let's be honest, it's about the, you know, the narrative that's been going on in Coventry for the last five, six years, just always fighting for a budget concern. We don't put these things on the chopping block, on the table to cut, to threaten. These are our reality. And again, going back to the local aid component, you know, the concern going into FY '22 is that we're going to be starting talking about significant cuts, and we're in December of 2020. You know, it's got to end. And I understand that. You know, Mr. Pearson brought a really good point at one of our School Committee meetings, and, you know, I really hadn't thought about it, being a parent myself, but said, you know, parents are going to do what they truly believe is in the best interest for their children. And, you know, I always say, I'm really, I don't know, I would love to find ways to get people to fight because I know people believe in education. I know this community wants to have the best schools, the best schools, never, not the best schools we can afford. They want the best schools. And I'm just trying to find ways to get people to fight for what they believe in, not just pick up and say, okay, we're just bailing, we're just leaving, even though we pay our taxes, we're going to go someplace else. But it's challenging. Every year I've been here, except for my very first year, and that was in a budget that I had a lot to do with, so we put in all daycare, it's been a fight. And so I know, I appreciate the council wanting to work with us and addressing, you know, takes ownership with us on these problems. But we really need to do something now to change that narrative. The CTE Pathway Program Review, that's ongoing. We're looking, you know, I had a conversation with Ms. Patnod last night about programs and looking at numbers. The reality is, if we cut programs, we cut anywhere, we're going to lose students, and probably to the point where it's going to cost us more than the programs are costing now. We are looking at ways of, you know, improving our programs. You know, we have a lot of programs, they participate, our students participate in Skills USA, and they do a phenomenal job. They had an open house a couple of weeks ago, and the reviews were phenomenal. From families, from students. We have great programs. You know, we've neglected putting money back into our facilities. We can't compete with some of the facilities. You know, I appreciate the School Building Committee led by Mr. Murray, and, you know, we have Town Council members and other school committee members on it, and many community members. But we need to, you know, make that point to this community that despite the challenging times, we're still going to invest. And that's one of the issues we've had with our career tech. While we've had some Perkins money to invest, there's been very little ability to reinvest the revenues that we get from tuitioning students back into the program, those going to our general fund. And as we see now, we're going to be having more students leave than we're bringing in. And it doesn't have, I don't think there's a correlation, I know there's not a correlation with the quality of our programs. It's all these other circumstances that we're dealing with. So, you know, I beg the council to continue to work with us to find ways to overcome this because it's really this culture that we have to change. We have to change it together. And I know there's willingness there, and I appreciate it. And then finally, the maintenance requirement for operating expenditures. We have to have 2.5% of our operating has to be towards maintenance within our buildings. And custodians can't cover that 2.5%. And as we saw this year, if it's not in our operating budget, if we're not funded appropriately, then what the state did is they took it away from the housing aid that was going to be used for debt service. I think it was, might have been, was it $430,000, $460,000 this year? Which means that's revenue, that impacts all of us because it's revenue that the town has to make up, because you still have to pay that debt service. So that's something we really need to tackle. And it's not a way that, okay, the town's going to give us so much money, we're going to just have to divert that. You know, we have to fund the programs we have to fund. We need to make sure there's teachers in front of students. We have to make sure that our students with disabilities, our students that are struggling learners, our students that are ELL students, that they have the resources that they need to access the curriculum. So this is something that we really need to look at how we're going to tackle that maintenance component requirement. It doesn't go away, any housing aid that's due to us, it doesn't, isn't like the state takes it, but they put it in a restricted account only for us to utilize. And we're in that, we're dealing with that situation this year. That's the only reason we were able to get some of the work done on our air quality and HVAC work because of the state putting that money in a restricted account. I'm going to ask Sarah to go on to the, if you don't mind, Sarah, the next slide, and if you don't mind taking over. But this is important here. I think we talk a lot about the past, and, you know, people are concerned about why we're asking for nearly 4% a year. And I think this is an incredible visual to help people understand. Again, I'm not pointing the finger at the past. It's a reality. This is our current scenario. But you can see the impact it has and the impact it's going to have on us moving forward. So Sarah, do you mind taking over, please?
Yep. No, good evening. So we have received a lot of questions about the historical appropriations and the difference between where, you know, where the funding has been going over the past few years. So we did put this together for you. It is a bar graph of just the school appropriations. We didn't put together the bar graph on the town or dive into that deeper. But you'll notice that for about eight years, the school department was essentially level-funded. And at the time that this was taking place, the funding formula for the state did change, and Coventry was on the quote-unquote "winning" side for the state funding formula. But the intent of that was to catch the community up because the state had been underfunding Coventry for so long. And when that was rolled out, it was made clear by the state that that was not supposed to have an impact on the local funding. It wasn't saying that the locals had been overfunding, it was that the state had been underfunding. And there was also a caution put out by the state to all the communities on the quote-unquote "winning" side, that there would be a funding formula cliff when that ketchup money ran out. And that actually ran out pretty much the first year that I started here. But you'll see that, you know, over that period of time, where the local appropriations was essentially level-funded, expenditure still increased year over year. I know last year we had done a, we had done a slide, and I believe the healthcare had gone up, you know, over 16% just in that timeframe. So this is a good perspective because while we can't go backwards and change the past, we do have to kind of recognize how we got into this situation. Unfortunately, with a lot of the requirements or restrictions that we have, we can't continue to raise our base, you know, over the 4% levy ask or the school department raising our total appropriation ask over the 4%. So what decisions we make now have a significant impact going forward? Because if we choose to continue to underestimate our appropriation needs from the local community, we will set ourselves up for failure going forward. Because we'll be capped at how much we can increase that base. So I'm not going to go into this too much further. I think it's been up on the screen. There's not too much information that everybody can take a peek at what happened on the school side and on the town side during this period of time. So the next slide is a high-level draft of the 2022 budget. And we have it in two different scenarios. Because the current proposal is to move forward with a $1.2 million increase in appropriation, you'll see that the last two columns represent what would happen if that passed and what that would mean for 2022. And then in the first two columns, if we remain level-funded and have to seek appropriation increase off of a level-funded FY '21 appropriation year. In both scenarios, we are projecting a deficit at the bottom. I did add in what I estimated the additional maintenance costs would be in order to meet that threshold for the state. And again, I think out of a lot of this budget, that is a key area that the School Committee and Council really needs to come together on and make some decisions strategically moving forward. While I agree that we need to be always funding our facilities, I can also say that it's a tough law to be put in place when you're barely maintaining your facilities and then have to go all the way up to two and a half to 3% of your operating budget over a short period of time. That's a tough, that's a tough number for communities to try and tackle. But regardless, that money is going to be set aside for the schools one way or another. And I usually like to sit in the position where we're taking control and deciding how we're going to hit that number rather than the state coming in and mid-year taking money away from the town and redirecting it to the school. So most of the operations are consistent to what we're operating this year, assuming that a lot of the COVID requirements would go away. The big increases that we have are really the areas that Mr. Levis had already talked about. You know, just the, some of the applications that we have at the middle school right now would put us at over a $700,000 increase in out-of-district tuition. Just with that one handful of applications as it is. So I can pause here for any questions. This is pretty much the extent of our presentation. Again, this is super high level. So I think maybe at this point, if we can, Dr. Dixon, I can turn it back over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for members of the council to members of the school? Ms. Ludwig?
Thank you, President Dixon. So thank you, Mr. Levis and Ms. Mangiarelli, for going over some of those items. I have a couple of comments before we, maybe questions. So firstly, the, I completely agree with Superintendent Levis's sentiment earlier in the conversation that this year has had a significant impact on the children in our community. I've seen it in my own home. And so I do want to just show my support and agreement in how hard our teachers and staff at the municipal level are working despite the conditions that everyone is in. So I agree with that sentiment. Thank you for saying that. I agree and thank them as well. Also, in terms of some of the budget information that was just put forward by Ms. Mangiarelli, I think the, the things that stand out to me are, as I personally think about this budget season we're going into, are what do I want Coventry? And what does my district want Coventry to look like? And that, I think, is longer than just the three-year that we're talking about right now. I think we probably need to think longer term than just the three-year. And we probably need to, maybe not tonight, but over the course of this discussion, look a little bit farther ahead. And we need to start putting out some of the facts for our community. We've had multiple, multiple budgets rejected at this point, zero budgets rejected, 4% budgets rejected. And I think at this point, we need to figure out, how can we possibly do a few things different for this budget cycle? And how can we get the facts out to our community so they understand what they're choosing between for the next budget that they go to approve or reject? Personally, from my side and from many of the people in my district, I want my children to stay in school in Coventry. So I think there's a couple of things here that we need to address, and we need to almost right the ship on as a group, as Town Council and as School Committee together in these decisions. And I look forward to that. So some of the suggestions that I know have been working their way to Chairperson Patnod and President Dixon in terms of ways that we can manage this budget cycle slightly differently, meaning could we have some more information at each level so that every person in both of our sides understand what these line items are going towards? What are the facts in terms of, Ms. Mangiarelli, you mentioned, we've essentially been looking at this level funding for a period, and then the numbers go up. How does that state number change so dramatically year over year? Because I think there's also some positive stories in the background there that maybe we need to talk to the community about. So for example, the state aid is going down, so we may need to raise revenue on the back of that. But there's possibly a good story there that's not being told, such as the median income in Coventry is going up. So for example, I live in a community here, over in the Oaks, off of Teakwood West, and there's 76 families like mine, or 75 other families like mine, that have moved in here from other locations, that either want to send their children to school here or want to grow with the community. And there's probably some good reasoning behind why we may have lost some of that money. So I'd like to help share in some of those facts and do that together with the School Committee. Right now, I don't have any questions. I just had those comments. Thank you, President Dixon.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Shockley, did I see your hand up? Yes.
So I really appreciate what Councilwoman Ludwig said, and I won't repeat what she said, but I do have some questions, Superintendent Levis, just based on, what are additional costs that we have as part of our school lunch program that other schools wouldn't have?
So we have, there's the contract that some of the, the school food service employees have is different than, I think there are, I think there are six other districts that in the state there are six other districts that, in the state, that the food service management workers are part of this bargaining unit. And it's just something that, you know, we've been working with. The other part of that is that we are not part of the negotiations. It's done through the food service management company, which happens to be Sodexo, but before it was Aramark. And so that, I think that's a built-in cost of just, it starts off at $150,000. But then, you know, some of the other problems we've had is that because we lose money, most districts, the food service is supposed to be self-sustaining, right? And so the profits are put back into food service. So if we need a freezer, if we need cafeteria tables, in many districts, the profits are used to purchase those. Unfortunately, because we lose money, and we still have freezers that go, we still have cafeteria tables that we need to replace, it's just, it's an additional expense for us. So, you know, we're not making money. We're actually, we're trying to just cut our losses every year. And we need to get to a spot where at least we're breaking even. So
And do we have to keep our program like that? And if other schools aren't part of it?
Yeah, because, yeah, they have a right. When a new company comes in, they still have the bargaining unit, is still there. And so that company would have to negotiate. We've been working hard. I mean, obviously, COVID has taken, you know, nothing's changed, but we have to deal with this health crisis. But we were working with, we've had many meetings with Sodexo, with their attorneys, our attorneys, to look at this, to address this. And so it's an ongoing challenge, but it's not a quick fix. It's not a simple fix. In fact, when I came on board and when Ms. Mandrelli came on board, we believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Mandrelli, but we were floating, we owed about $400,000, some odd thousand dollars was owed to the food service. We just kept on kicking that down the road, and finally, we paid off that debt. And when, what happened was when Chartwells left and Aramark took over, they inherited some of the debt, and we never paid them off. And so when Ms. Mandrelli came on, and this was done with the full cooperation and support of the school committee, we actually paid off that debt moving forward. So it's been a challenge, you know? And we have great people. I don't want to slight Sodexo and the workers. You know, they've been instrumental in feeding our community. When we, when, you know, we closed schools down March 13th, they've been great. Many of them have been many, many years in Coventry, they're Coventry residents, but it's just, it's one other additional issue that we've, you know, inherited and have yet to to be able to correct. But it's not for lack of effort. It's been ongoing conversations. We've looked at other drastic measures, but again, right now, there's so many variables with it in terms of, everybody's getting free and reduced lunch. And so, but, you know, we're trying to maximize as many people as we can in our schools that will get lunch. You know, we still have Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from, I believe it's 1:30 to 3:00 at the high school, we're providing lunch to any children in the community. They don't have to attend our schools. And we get reimbursed for a percentage of those lunches. So, but again, we haven't been able to, you know, come up with a solution that's going to help us break even.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yes.
From the council?
I'm sorry, I had more questions. And so I'm also wondering, as you look towards changes to your CTE and pathway programs, who outside of the school helps with that review? And what do you, I mean, I know if we get rid of a program, we'll always lose students who are in that program. But do we have a way that we're gauging, what are programs that will create an employable graduate if they decide to go into a trade? What will save them on college education if they decide to go to college because they got credit for it in high school? Are we moving to get more programs like that so that we're attracting people to the school and keeping people?
Right. I mean, I think that's, yeah, I think that's an ongoing conversation. At one point, I believe Dr. Dixon and Ms. Patno were actually a part of a subcommittee that reviewed, it worked with an outside individual looking at our career tech. It's, again, these aren't simple solutions. One of the issues, we haven't been able to reinvest money into our programs. So the other part is that we have a program like Cosmetology. So you're talking about like the high-skill, high-wage programs. And so part of that is like for Cosmetology, and this is my own personal opinion, Cosmetology is not considered a high-skill, high-wage program. And yet, it's one of the programs we have that draw the most out-of-district students into it. And what they had to do was to stay accredited, to say, we had to also add a business component so that the individuals learn not only cosmetology skills, but they learn how to run a business. So we had to add those, so anybody that runs a cosmetology program. So, you know, we did eliminate carpentry program because we only had X number of students, even though I have people that are coming to me saying, we need carpenters, we need skilled people. They'd like to reinstate a program. So, but we're open to, you know, to say that, you know, this is an ongoing process. And I know when we look at budgets, we go through this cycle, that's what we do. We sit as an internal team, look at students that are coming up. But we also try to figure out why, you know, there's a lot of other issues. And as I mentioned in Slide number two, the narrative that continues to exist here, where people are afraid that budget, things are going to get cut because of funding, that sports are going to get cut because of funding, it doesn't help us, and we need to overcome that. And I think that's the point that Sarah was making with that last slide, the third slide, that talked about the level funding over eight years. We could get 4% for the next several years, and it may not address our needs. So we have to work together as a school committee and as a council to figure out. So, but, you know, this review will be ongoing, and, you know, we've talked about bringing outside consultants in to look at. So it's, you know, it's not like we're, you know, I'm open to any ideas or suggestions that the council has.
I mean, my thought is, I agree with you budget-wise. You know, this issue started years ago, and we're trying to work our way through it. But I think one consistent thing that members of the community want, besides a good school system, is to see what we're doing to, you know, we don't want to do the same thing over and over again and expect different results. So if we're showing a tax increase, we have to show what we're changing, what we're bringing to the school, what we're providing students with as graduates of Coventry High School.
Right, but I think that
I think it's an important narrative.
But I think that's something that we do. You know, again, I don't know how much, you know, I think Ms. Ludwig brought up an excellent point in terms of communication. You know, we're in the process of having a brand-new website that's going to be user-friendly. We've heard a lot of criticism. You know, we hear when people think of a school department, the first thing they do is they go to their website. So hopefully, we can address that through that. That's one avenue. But there's a lot of positives. I don't, the culture, the narrative that's out there isn't always factual. And I think there's a lot of great, and I mentioned before, just the open houses, and just our students themselves. We have many students. Last year, we had two students go to Cornell. We had, I think, a couple of students go to Brown. A student went to Columbia. We have students that are going into Electric Boat, making $37,000, getting, you know, with the opportunity for free college education. We have students that are earning multiple, you know, numerous credits, college credits through both CTE pathways and also the EP program that's through Rhode Island College and URI, where they can get credits by taking a chemistry course, but also taking certain assessments that allow them three graduate, three college credits. So there's a lot of positives, and, you know, in terms of communicating that in an ongoing way to the community, but I don't want to insinuate, I don't think that we have a failing school system. I think there's a, there's a, there's
I don't either.
A culture out there. We have so many positives. I mean, our NEASC, we haven't even had a chance to really go through that, but our NEASC accreditation, again, some of the issues we've had have been, you know, which we're addressing now. We've had curriculum that hadn't been worked on in 20 years, which is a shame. But we, you know, with Mr. Coward's support and our teachers' support, we've been doing incredible curriculum work the last three years. Our facilities haven't been invested in. You saw, the first time we had money was when Mr. Wazika last year allocated $200,000 to the school. Prior to that, for 12 years, we hadn't received a penny. So our facilities, you know, our basketball courts, if we sand them one more time, they won't be, we couldn't even have basketball games in them. So, you know, there's a lot of reasons why, and, you know, it comes down to funding. And all we're looking for is the willingness of the council, with the school committee, and getting buy-in and the willingness of the community. So like you said, they know, as Ms. Ludwig says, what is our vision? What do we want for schools? And, but how are we going to get there? You know, the challenge we've had with doing a five-year plan is our state aid. We don't, our state aid is so volatile that it's very difficult to look at that. So
And I just had a question also, and this is my last one, I apologize. But I don't know if you know, Ms. Mandrelli, is there someone that has residents, is it our state senator or representative, about the state aid? You know, it seems like we have to reach out beyond the town council to say, how is this working? Why are you funding it this way? And then also, is there a place where you level off? Where state aid becomes more consistent again? So I'm not sure on the answers to those.
Yeah, so typically, there's a legislative meeting that's held in Coventry with the school committee, the council, and the, you know, our local reps. I would say, I think at every single meeting, I've brought up the funding formula as an issue, because of the volatility and because there is no maintenance of effort on a community-by-community level. There's a maintenance of effort threshold on, you know, overall state, but the way the funding formula is driven, and Ms. Ludwig brought it up nicely, when we lose state aid, oftentimes, it is because the median income in Coventry is higher than the state median income. And also, the property values in Coventry are higher than the state average for property values. That's a component that people don't always want to hear, and it doesn't always lead to an additional capacity to pay. So, you know, just because property values go up doesn't mean that there's more cash in somebody's pocket to pay bills, you know? So it's definitely a fine line. But I would say that we have brought that up. I've been pretty vocal with RIDE. I had heard that the funding formula was going back into review, but I don't know how much focus was going to be made on that. But I would say that that's something that should be continued to be pushed with all representatives. There is no leveling out at this point. The additional funds from the phase-in of the funding formula is gone. So now we will see a volatility every year as enrollment changes, and that's both in total numbers and percentage of free and reduced price lunch. And then it will impact, it'll change based on our state share ratio, which takes into effect, you know, the median family income and the property values as well. So, yeah, I think continuing to stay on our state reps is key.
Thank you both.
Hold up. Mr. LeBlanc?
Thank you, President Dixon, and thank you, Mr. Levis and Ms. Mandrelli. I really appreciate the presentation. I think one important fact or question that needs to be asked, based off of the last slide that you shared, regardless, even if the 1.98% budget gets passed, or if we stay on a level-funded budget, we're going to have a shortfall on the school side. And I believe this is a question for Mr. Wazika or Mr. Arnett, but knowing, hypothetically, if this 1.98% budget fails, what are we looking at for a rate increase for next year? Or a proposed? Because I know I might be jumping a little bit ahead because you guys have not provided your presentation yet, but taking what Ms. Mandrelli shared, and knowing what you know, are we looking at a 3%? Are we looking at a 4% next year if we stay on a level-funded budget?
Mr. LeBlanc, well, this isn't about, just to advise you, this isn't about, we don't have a presentation for tonight. Under the code of ordinances, this is about the school committees or the school department's budget, not ours. So we will not
I thought we were doing it together one.
No, not, this is required by our code. But as far as our projection for next year, and the school department's right, we're looking at, I mean, to be able to fund, we're looking at a 4% increase, thereabouts, to be able to do what needs to be done. It's the only way that we can try to get out of the hole that both sides are in, is to try to bring those up. And how we get the public to understand that, that's the challenge that we all need to work together to try to do that. But, yeah, we're looking at, right now, again, we're too early in it, but, yeah, I'm projecting a 4% at this point.
I think that's just an important fact that we need to get out to the community.
Any other questions, Mr. LeBlanc?
That's it for now.
Okay, thank you. I just would like to reiterate a comment that was made earlier. This is extraordinary times for education. It's very stressful for the students and for the staff. As you know, I have a daughter who's a middle school teacher. She calls us almost every day. She's providing distance learning. She's been put on quarantine by her school twice now, and it's very, very difficult to be a teacher. And we can hear the stress increase in her voice every time we talk to her. So it's difficult for the staff to stay focused. It's difficult for students. And I do appreciate all of the work that not only the teachers, but also the students are doing to stay focused so that they can make the best of their education. The first comment or question I'd like to ask is this. We are losing revenue, or the school is losing revenue through all this out-of-district tuition, which is projected at over $700,000 this year. What kind of data do you have to indicate why students are leaving? I don't understand what other reasons that they are providing you.
So I think
What can we do to fix this?
So I can tell you, the students now, I mean, I think it's, you know, I, to me, it's obvious, I'll say, because I hear parents tired of fighting, tired of, you know, they're saying that, they'll say, you know, I don't take it personal, I have a job to do, but a superintendent, I do not want to go for it again. I talked to Ms. Patno about this last night. Like, I am not going to decimate this school department. You can have someone sit in my chair and do it, but this community, as Ms. Ludwig said, people are moving in, home, spending a significant amount of money, and they're not retirees. You know, maybe there's a few 55 or above. They're moving in with families. But the other people are telling me, you know, this is what I hear, this is always the way it's been in Coventry, always the way. I don't accept that. We have to change that. But the key word in that statement is "we." "We." I am so tired as superintendent, listening to people say, you know, I understand, we know you need this, and we understand, but, you know, the "yeah, buts, yeah, buts." We have to take a stand because the problem here is people are tired. If I was a parent in Coventry, and my son loves sport, my son was a great athlete, very quiet, loved athletics, did very well, and that's where he made all of his friends, just like people in drama, in music, when we're not having that. And as superintendent, I have to say, this is, to get to this budget, this is what we have to do. It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. And people don't want to hear it anymore, Dr. Dixon. They don't want to hear it anymore. It's been five years. You know, I don't want to put words in Ms. Patno's mouth, but she, I think she had said to me in a conversation, Ms. Patno, that of all the years, 18 years, very few years did you not have to fight? Very few years did a town manager come forward and say, okay, we're going to support? Did the council support? And that's what I'm saying is, people are tired of it. I've heard that from them here. I don't want to fight with people, but I have a superintendent, I have a responsibility. And remember, I don't live in Coventry. I live in Alabour, Mass., where people are fighting and are coming and building a brand-new high school. So, but in Coventry, you know, how do you go eight years level fund? How do you not put money into your facilities for 12 years? Right? And to me, it's about leadership. So, you know, I know it's a roundabout way to answer your question, but people are tired. And you're right, every time we've talked about the median income, I've had people that are elected officials who deny that. No, that's not true. We know there are people that are struggling, but we know there are people that have significant amount of resources too. We have to acknowledge our community is diverse. So it's not that simple that, it's not, I don't believe it's the quality of our programs at all. People are sick and tired, and we need to be able to invest money in. And right now, like I said, that's 700,000, that's as of today. If this narrative comes out that FY22 budget is cut, 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 it's going to double probably. And then what? So it's, these are, you know, we need to change that, and we can only do it by working together creatively. And obviously, it's not going to be easy. But I think that's what the community needs to hear, that all of us here on this screen value education, we value the reason why people come to Coventry, you know, just like they want to be safe. Just like they want to be safe, they want to have great recreation, but they also want to have great schools. And we need to find a way to make all that happen.
I, I understand what you're saying. I was just hoping that if we had more information about why students are leaving, as we start to discuss what the Coventry Building Committee is going to present to us for improvement of the infrastructure and some programming for our schools, that the information that we get from why students are leaving could help inform our decisions about some of the decisions we have to make when the council hears the presentation by the Coventry Building Committee as it proposes different plans to us and bond amounts. So I was hoping we would get a little more information from that. So I will carry on to my last question is this. I heard you say Superintendent Levis, that even if you received 4% each, each year for many years, it still would be a problem in catching up. So we have a dilemma here because by state law, we can't go over 4%. So I'm looking for answers. What can we do as a council and a school committee? What can we do? Because even if we get 4% each year for several years, it seems like it really won't be enough for quite a long time. I'm not sure if Mrs. Manzarelli can answer the question or someone else on the staff. We seem, we seem to be stuck. And what do we do to get out of this position?
So, I mean, some of the, some of the factors I can speak to, you know, and again, I, I have said, I think that this is bigger than just a school issue. This really, I think, should be more of a community effort. You know, the same way that we look at a whole school budget and say, listen, this year, this school is going to need this, and, and the following year, the other school is going to get something. I, I would recommend to the community that that be an approach, community-wide, right down to facilities. You know, we've looked at school department vehicles not getting replaced in years and years and years. I don't know why, as a community, we don't say DPW needs vehicles this year, schools need vehicles next year, police need vehicles. And I, I understand that certain departments bear and tear a little bit more, but no department should go, you know, five, 10, 15 years without replacement of vehicles while others get updated vehicles every single year. So I, I don't know if we want to look at it just as a school-level budget or if we want to start looking at it as a community budget and stop putting, pitting people against, you know, sides against each other. I do think that we've made some structural changes that could play off, pay off on the school side. I don't think we're going to avoid a 4% increase for a couple of years, but I don't think that that has to be forever. You know, from a long-term planning, I would look at always doing some type of increase. I would never go back to a level funding of school or town every single year for multiple years in a row. But, you know, the same way that we did with the healthcare. So when we walked in, you know, the way that the healthcare is set up, you should only be getting 0% to 3% increases every year. And that, that is the benefit of being a self-insured plan, is controlling your claims. Unfortunately, some bad decisions have been made in that respect, the same as, at the community level. A lot of money was taken out. Less-than-recommended percentage increases were put in place. And that resulted in a 12.5% increase in healthcare a year ago on the school side. But that was a corrective measure. So while I'm projecting an increase in healthcare right now on this high-level budget because we only have, you know, six months of claims in, I'm actually hoping that the healthcare increase for next year goes back down to a 0% or 1%, where it should be under a self-insured model. So sometimes we have to, we have to take a bigger hit in order to help correct. And I hope that doing some, some percent, 4% increases for a few years, you know, if the, if the building project can take place, even if we can use some residual funds, you know, we're looking to invest some of the COVID money and the money that was scooped from the housing aid into facilities, that starts the ball rolling because then you start generating a reimbursement year over year after money that you, you've invested. You know, so I think, and, and also, looking from a staffing perspective, the, the teachers did come forward with a contract, which, yes, I know it has a big percentage increase in year three, and everybody's concerned about that. But there is also so, some incentives in there that as older staff retires, the newer staff that come on will cost a little bit less money with the, with some of the leave payments that they have in place. We did do co-pay changes, which hadn't been done in years and years. So we have made some structural changes with the intent of, of controlling those expenses. And, and getting back to the career in tech, you know, I, I think if you can tie that in with some of the building project, I know more the emphasis is at the, at the middle school. But I, I think if you can start connecting those, people are going to want to stay. But I really think the, the key is the school and town actually working together. And I think that that would put a lot of ease on the community in, in general. I can't speak to the educational direction, and I know I'm on, I'm on my way out a little bit, so I'm just giving you my, you know, my insight right now. But I, I think if we stay on this track with continuing to whittle away and, and improve operations and stretch dollars where we can, Coventry doesn't have to go down a bad road. I think this is actually a crucial time with how we choose to pass the money that we have.
So it sounds, it sounds like, as was stated at the beginning of our discussion, we really need to do planning more than just year to year. We need to have a longer-range vision of where we want to go and really try to determine how we're going to get there. But it does concern me that if we're looking at 4% increases year after year for quite a period of time, and I'm not sure we're talking about two or four or five years, we need to determine how we're going to get there. Because if we know the max is four, and we're projecting that even 4% over a few years is not going to help the schools and the community, then we need to do some other serious thinking about where we're going to get to, where we want to go to satisfy the needs of the community. Mr. Murray?
Thank you. I did want to address a couple of points you brought up, and I think they're fair points. You're a data-driven person, I'm a data-driven person. And I think having some data that maybe helps support some of the decision-making going forward would be extremely helpful. We've talked about this programmatic audit, or performance audit, different things like that. And I've asked about this in the past, and part of the answer I get is, well, we as a department don't really have the money to fund an outside study and really look at this program. I appreciate the tone of us coming together tonight as this is our problem, meaning all of us. And, you know, I think part of this is that, as part of that potential audit, or whether it be a performance or programmatic, we need to build in some evaluation of our programs. I think it'd be ignorant to some extent to say that we're, we're operating perfectly in all regards. Different school, different districts do different things. Some operate better than others. Obviously, to the point made, we're, we're, we don't know if we're doing it right because we don't have really a sense, you know, where we're going. We, we don't like to make decisions on a whim, right? But we're, we're kind of doing that. And to your point, we're not really doing that long-range planning. So I think, I would hope that the council would help us, as a school committee, gain some of that data. You know, when, when Scott Jensen came in the DLT under Governor Raimondo, they initiated a program called Real Jobs RI. And the first thing they did was initiate a study, I believe John Hopkins did it. And they looked at core markets. What are the, what are high-growth employment markets? And then what they did was they structured the entire training program around those markets. And it was a data-driven initiative. And I would suggest that we need to do some of the same. You know, we don't know if the CTE programs we have are the high-growth markets. While they're working, and I appreciate the fact that we have those, those students coming in the districts for those programs, are they the right programs? Are we, maybe we need to reshuffle the deck. Maybe we need to look at pathways a little bit closer. Maybe there's ways that we can save money and cut costs, improve efficiency. So I think that, that's, that's all a great idea, but it starts with some funding upfront. If you want to retool a line, you've got to put some money into the system to get it out. And so with this audit and the performance audit that we've talked about, I would suggest that we build in some scope to evaluate those programs and look at it from a budgetary and programmatic standpoint and see what we can do to maybe retool. To the, to the superintendent's point, we feel we have a good foundation. We're not looking to deconstruct the school. But I think your point's well taken, Mr. Dixon. It may be time to relook at the system and retool it and, and really not keep doing the same thing over and over. Because, you know, budget's one thing, but, I mean, the reality is, we have to get this under control. We realize that. Because even if we levy 4% for the next five years, you know, how long does it last? And, and, you know, the, the public's only going to sustain so much. So I just wanted to say that, you know, it's a really good point you make. I think we hear you, it's something the school committees talked about, but we need your support, and I think the time is now.
Mr. Wazika?
Madam Chair, one of the, one of the issues that I brought up in the past, and time and time again, we need to deal with our legislators, our statewide legislators. We need to make a change in the old Senate Bill 350, Piva Weave, or 44-5-2 that sets the maximum levy. The problem with this law, and it all began in '07, and that's where we, all the community started to face this problem, we lose our natural growth, the natural, the improvements that take place in property, development that takes place. We lose all of that tax revenue that would be coming in. Last year, we had nearly $1 million in increased growth that would have generated $1 million additional for the town without raising our tax rate by one cent. That would have come in. 3050, 4452 forces us to reset our levy back down at, at the same level as the year before. So all of that additional money that came in goes back in, and in theory, it does, it lowers the tax rate by a few cents, depending on how much comes in. So we then have to go back out to the public and say, we got $1 million in natural growth because we put a development in, and six houses came in here. And, and now we, we've got to go back and ask them to give us the money that we already would have had from those, from those tax properties coming online. But 3050 makes us reset it. They've got to change this. We're losing too much, and then trying to keep going back to the public and saying, we need 4%. We need 4%. When we have $1 million or $1.5 million in natural increases that we can't just keep, we wouldn't be going out to the public and asking for a 4% increase. We'd be going back and looking at a much smaller percentage, something that's more manageable. That's why we're looking at 4% every year. We lose that growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. LeBlanc?
Since the, the agenda item does say FY21, '22 Town Council Work Session on Municipal Capital and School Department Budget, so I think this is a germane question. We, we keep on bringing up the fact that we're going to need 4% for the next couple of years. Now, is that assuming that we go out to bond for the, the school building? Or is that not even assuming the school building? I just at least want to ask the question.
Mr. Wazika?
We are, that does not include any school bonding. That would be over and above. One area that doesn't, that, that, that allows you to go over the 4% cap is debt service in a case like this. So that, we would, it's almost a guaranteed. But now, depending on how much that debt service is going to be, we'll determine how much over and above the 4% that the town would be looking at. I'm still waiting for numbers back from our bond council. I sent an email out again today, Luke and I and John. We had a meeting with them a couple of weeks ago, and we're waiting to get some word on what these bonds will actually, what effect it's going to have on our rates and stuff based on current, current values. So we're working on getting some numbers. Hopefully, I'll have them before Monday so we can, that can be given to Luke, and they can bring that up as well during that, the meeting on Monday.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Patno, we certainly can entertain questions from your members if they would like to ask any questions. Mr. Florio?
Ed, what is this, what is the League of City and Towns? What do they say about 40, 35? Is that the legislation?
No, it's, while it was 3050 was the legislation, Senate Bill 3050 back in '06. It's actually state law, 44-5-2, maximum levy. Actually, right now, the biggest issue is, is COVID and everything else that we've been discussing in budgets and all of that. So it really hasn't come up a lot. But I think this is something as we go deeper and deeper. And if you look back historically, a lot of our problems in most communities started when this thing fully kicked in over the, over the, over the few years. It's put us, we lose, I haven't done the stats. I'm going to try to go back and find some time to do how much money we've actually lost and had to go back to the public and ask for. And even, like I said, we've already gotten the money because of the increase on development, properties that have come online that are now on there. And then we give it all back and allegedly attack, and that's why you see a tax rate versus a levy rate, there's always a variance in that. And the bigger the variance, the more money we actually put back into the levy that year. So the bigger you see that variance, you know that was even more and more. And, and the last couple of years, we're talking 800,000, $1 million that we have, that we lose that would have came in under normal circumstances without this. 4452 makes us reset that levy back to last year's numbers. Instead of just letting natural growth, the levy increase could be based on the levy last year, the natural growth, and then the 4% cap going forward. It's a very simple fix that would allow us to keep that growth and not take it away and not make us need to go back and ask the public for it again. We're actually asking for money that we already would have had in the coffers because of it. So it's, it's, it's a, it was a great idea when they passed it, but what it's doing to all of our communities, it's, it's killing us. We lose all of it. But hopefully, we could get them to understand, maybe with this year with COVID and the, the effect that everybody's budget's on, maybe they can go and revisit this and make this change to allow us to do the float plus and then go to 4% after we add the new, the new increases in that come from natural growth. Would help to alleviate a lot of our problems moving forward.
I think, speak with you.
Please?
If you have the League of City and Towns with you saying the same thing, that means.
I'm going to be bringing, I'm going to be bringing this up because I've been looking at what's been going on with this and looking historically. A lot of this, a lot of our problems, town statewide, but particularly in our town, all started when they started making these changes and limiting this, this cap and losing that natural growth that appeared, that occurs. We've got several major projects that are going to be coming online over the next couple of years that are going to generate millions in additional revenue for the town that we're not even going to be able to claim. It's going to all go back down into the levy, reset levy, and then we start again asking for the money back that we would have already had if they didn't put, if they didn't reset this the way they do. So there's some huge projects that we're going to just lose out on and lose out on that money that we wouldn't have to go back to the public and ask for. We already have it in our coffers. And that's continuous for the year forward. So it would make a big difference on helping us to stabilize our budgets and get back on track.
Thank you. Mr. Arnett, we don't want to have you leave us tonight without any potting words. So I'd like to give you an opportunity to speak now.
Thank you very much. I want to say thank you to everybody there. And I know that you all are very passionate about everything that you do in the town and, and as well as the school committee. It's been a pleasure to do what I could for, for Coventry. It's been a pleasure. I, I put a lot of effort in, and I, I tried as much as I possibly could. I did, we did a lot of work there, did a lot of good stuff. Unfortunately, it's not seen, it's, there's not a lot of, it's not out there. But there's a lot of work that, a lot of stuff that's, that's been taking place. And I, it was an absolute pleasure to work with, with Mr. Wazika. Ed, you are, you are a fantastic person to work under, and you have the best intentions for your town. You love your town to death, and I, I know you fight for what you believe is absolutely right. So thank you all, everybody, Sarah, Craig, and everybody on the school committee, as well as everybody on the council. Thank you very much. And it's been a pleasure to those, to the town of Coventry. Thank you very much. It was a pleasure to serve for you guys, and I wish Coventry the best. You have untold potential in your town. It's un, I can't even describe it.
Thank you so much.
Mrs. Dixon, if I may, if I may just continue with this love fest for two more minutes. I'd like to.
I didn't know it was going to be a love fest.
It's what it's turned into. I would, I would like to just take this opportunity to thank John for the last two years for everything he has done. He's worked diligently, long hours, he's had to put up with me calling him at all hours on stuff we're working on. He's been a great employee for the town. I'm going to truly miss, miss him. The town's going to miss him, and I wish him all the best in his future endeavors. And I should have gave a bad review when they called. Thanks, John, for everything you've done. I appreciate it. Thank you for tonight.
Thank you. We'll continue now with the questions. Um, any other comments by any other members of the school committee or the town council or the leadership? Yes, Mr. Murray.
But I already spoke, but I had a couple of things, uh, to address earlier discussion. First of all, I want to thank Ed for making the point because he's absolutely right. The town constantly talks about development and business growth and and building up our community. Well, what's the benefit if we don't reap what we sow? So, you know, it's been highly important that we work together to try to leverage a state leadership promotion. That includes the League of Cities and Towns, uh, renowned association of school committees, and all the other organizations. I would suggest that we both pass resolutions to the effect. I know we get discouraged because they don't seem like they work, but I think when you start looking across towns, you start gaining leverage as more and more towns sign on and the leaders start having to pay attention. There was new leadership in the State House that, uh, the particular leader that's there now is in a community that is experiencing the same things we are and budgetary wise. And so I would say that we're in a better position to make the case coming up. So, um, we talked about the lunch program, and one of the things I want to point out in the school effort, uh, the building effort, this has been part of the discussion. So, you know, part of the deficit is caused by not moving our 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 food, essentially. The kids aren't buying. And part of that has to do with our facilities. If you go to the middle school, the cafeteria facility is not adequately designed so kids can get through the line and actually get their lunches. And that has an impact. You're not selling as many lunches. So we talk about how do you solve some of the problems? Part of the solution to the problems is facilities. Part of it is retooling operations. It's it's, you know, I always refer to it as picking up nickels, not dollars. You know, we're going to have to kind of tweak along the edges and find where we can pick up that money. And part of it is investing in some of our facilities, and we were going to talk more about that on Monday. And I, to Ed's point, even if I don't have the numbers from Steve Maseroni to to talk about the bonds, I will start talking about numbers on that project because I think it's important. Both Ed and the school committee last year at our joint session, I remember Ed pointing us out what he just said to our legislative delegation, and it kind of fell on deaf ears. I pointed out, I was very vehemently advocating that they look at the new report, then new report by the State Senate. And as Mr. Pearson had chimed in, you know, it's not perfect. There were recommendations in there that that weren't all perfect. But one of the recommendations was to stabilize the funding. And that is something that has been put in that report, and then COVID hit and never really got moved forward. So I do think that that's something we we need to revisit. And, you know, just the final point I make is I know we talked a lot about kids leaving the district and, you know, we do have the building effort and that may have an somewhat of an impact. But I don't think it's the only thing. As as the superintendent pointed out, part of it's this wrangling every year in which gives a sense of instability. Part of it is, I think, retooling of some programs. Part of it is, you know, I think the superintendent talks a lot about culture of Coventry, and I think part of us working together, building a new culture is going to mean a lot. Just the fact that we're dialoguing and you're asking questions tonight beats a lot, so, um, that's all. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Coward.
Uh, to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Murray just said, I think part of what we're missing and 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 I think it's within reach is building enthusiasm and excitement about our our community, not just about the schools, but our community. And when we have really good things going on, people need to hear about them and know about them because what happens often is when when information is not given to people, they try to find it in places that are not reliable, and then the information they get is inaccurate. And when people have inaccurate information, they make poor decisions. And I think as we move forward, you know, from the town side into the school side, we need to make sure that people in our community know what's going on and 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 are making really, um, smart decisions about what they want to do with their children, what they want to do with their property, what they want to do as community members. And I think it really starts with communication. You know, social media can be a great platform for positive, but it could be, it could be equally as difficult for negativity. And and that becomes a tidal wave that comes, becomes very difficult to push back. So just to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Murray said, I think we can build in some excitement with with some of the projects we have coming up if we uh, come up with a really strategic communication plan.
So, Mr. Coward, uh, following through on what you just said, when you said we need to build up excitement and enthusiasm, what kinds of things have you thought about that we should be doing?
Well, I I I'll say one thing, um, we we rely on, uh, town meetings to talk about really great things. You know, for example, at every school committee meeting, we have a celebration where we celebrate something great. And and it's just a small example, but but just follow me here. Before COVID, if we had, um, more than ten residents, I'm not talking about employees, I'm talking about ten residents at a school committee meeting, uh, that that was a lot. Uh, the the only good thing that came out of COVID and us being forced into to this platform is we actually have more participants than we've ever had before. And so we we rely on opportunities, rely on meetings to give information, but I think we have to go beyond that. I think sometimes people need a summary report or people need to find, uh, what was said and discussed and and then shared in in a way. I know when I was a principal, and I know this is a a loose analogy, but I'll say it anyways. Uh, I was the number one cheerleader for my school. I promoted my school ten ways to Tuesday because I wanted everyone to know that my school was great. And after a PTO meeting, I sent out a report to the community saying this was what was discussed, this is what we shared, these are all the really great things happening at school. I spoke at every, every, uh, open house. I went to every parent conference. I was out, I was present, and I pushed for our community. I know Craig does that for our for our school department, and I know there are representatives that pull it, do it for the municipality. I guess what I'm suggesting is more of a joint effort where we work together to communicate for the betterment of the whole community, not just for, you know, one part of the community.
Thank you. Other, uh, comments or questions by people who have joined us this evening? Uh, Mr. Wazika, uh, the agenda does say that there will be some type of discussion or work session on the municipal capital and school department budget. What can you offer us this evening on the municipal budget? You're on mute right now.
Some people might say that's the best way I should be is on mute. The the the, right now, we're just getting into beginning phases of ours, uh, from our department heads. A couple of the department heads are are working on getting their their preliminary budgets worked on. We're just gonna, it's going to take some time to to move forward and do that. It's, uh, we don't have any numbers at this point, and like the school, we're not going to have any for for a bit until we, uh, we get a little bit deeper in. But, uh, we are, we're looking at, we're looking at a tough year. We're looking at, uh, we have a lot of needs out there. The schools have a lot of needs. Our infrastructure is crumbling. We've got, uh, we've got trucks going out and and plowing that are plowing with a pickup truck that belonged to one of, with a six wheeler. We're, we're all hurting. We've got to find a way to increase what what's coming in. And I I I want to just emphasize again, that thirty fifty change can make all the difference in the world for us in most communities. If we can get them to just let that growth occur and and put our, put our four percent limit on top after that. And, uh, it would help to alleviate all of our problems moving forward, but, but I bet tonight at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Patno.
Yes, I just have a follow up question for, uh, Mr. Wazika, and I was just wondering how thirty fifty correlates with Proposition Two and a Half in Massachusetts. Do they allow for growth like you're talking about? And so if if that in fact is true, because you're shaking your head, then I think that's would be the ammunition we need to say, you know, this is what Massachusetts does, you know, everybody looks to Massachusetts for everything, being number one in edu-, you know, whatever. Then I think that would really maybe solidify the argument that we're crucifying our cities and towns by not following the method that, um, Massachusetts uses.
There, it does. It's, it's, the two and a half is after, after growth. If you go back and look at the other communities in in our state, aside from the ones that have an exterior revenue source like beaches and and things that are guaranteeing a huge amount of income, most of our communities are pushing that three and a half, four percent every year is where they're going because, again, they're all losing it. They're all getting forced to go back to square one, start at last year's rate, no matter how much additional developer you add in the town. We could have Google come in and build a headquarters there, and and we wouldn't get ten cents out of it additional into our coffers. On the, on the initial, I mean, tertiary, secondary, yeah, we'd get some money there, but tax revenue, we wouldn't get a dime additional because of the way the system works. And that's, that's wrong. The whole system is wrong on what it does. It kills us. When we're forced to make up for the state not having an MOE on on education, and you're losing those funds and we're losing on the on the backend and not being able to keep the money that we have increasing because of of new development, we're we're getting hammered on both sides. They've got to do something to give us some leeway and give us some help so we can, we can help ourselves. And I really believe this is one of the best ways that we can help to stabilize these budgets for all of us and not go out and hit the public up for a four percent increase. As I said, if you look at 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 tax rate increase versus levy rate increase and thirty fifty is based on levy rate, you see it, you see, always see a difference between those two increases. As I said, bigger the difference, the more money we lost in development that we should have been able to keep in our budget, so.
Thank, thank you very much for that explanation.
You're welcome.
I do applaud many, all the ideas that have been suggested. Some of these things are going to take a little bit of time, and we may not see it for the twenty one twenty two budget. And so we do need to work as a community in order to, uh, fund those kinds of needs that we have both on the town and the school side. So I'm looking forward to continuing our collaboration, uh, through many meetings. I guess our next meeting is January fourth, so, uh, we'll be seeing, we'll be seeing a lot of each other and have lots of time to practice good communication skills. Let me see, Mr. Pearson, we haven't heard from you this evening. Any comments?
No, we have more slides to get through, so don't forget that. Uh, one comment, actually, don't forget about Proposition Two and a Half also, you know, being from Massachusetts, I kind of remember a little bit about what used to happen. Um, not only is it a different setup than we have in Rhode Island, but also on a local level, residents can override the the tax, uh, cap. Uh, it doesn't have to go to the state legislature to override the cap. So if a community decides, hey, we need three percent increase this year, uh, they're, they're empowered, enabled, so to speak, uh, to do that. Whereas in Rhode Island, we have to go to the legislature and and that's, um, usually frowned upon. So other differences between Rhode Island and Massachusetts to be aware of.
Okay, thank you. Last call for more questions, comments. Mr. Murray.
Hi, Mr. Wazika, when is, do we have an idea or actually this might go to the council president on when the joint legislative session is going to be? I know it's going to be late because we're already late.
Well, it it it's never had a set timeframe for it. I'm hoping to be able to do that probably by the beginning of February. Again, it's going to be, it's going to be Zoom based. And that itself is, uh, it's going to be a little bit of, uh, of a challenge as well, so I'm going to have to get that all set up. And especially with losing Mr. Arnett. I'm going to be stretched a little bit thinner, uh, until we get our replacement for him, but I'm hoping for maybe the first week in February that we'll be able to get something set up and 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 be able to do that. And I I do agree with your comment that we need to get joint resolutions passed and move them on to the other communities to try to get them to, uh, to come on board with this because I think, I think we'll find that they're willing to do it because they're all facing that same problem.
And and that actually was going to be my point is I think before that meeting, I would suggest that we work together on a joint resolution to reinforce the point prior to our joint session with this, our, uh, state legislative delegation and present it at that meeting. I think it's a good start. Um, certainly doesn't end there, but I think it, I think we're more, we're stronger working together as a group. And then we know that, we've pointed out the problems. We all know the problems. The question is, what are the solutions? This is the first step in a very long process of trying to obtain a solution, so. I would suggest leadership on both sides consider it and and hopefully we can push that forward.
I'd also like to mention that we will be working on a budget schedule, um, but number of meetings that we will be having in the next few months. Um, and we will be preparing a draft and then sharing it with the superintendent so that we can have collaboration on the dates to be able to move forward. Uh, any other questions? Mr. Superintendent Levis.
I I do believe we have to share our three year, uh, slide though, the, uh, the slide that, um, the three year revenue projections.
That's fine. I thought Sarah had completed her presentation. Sorry.
So this actually had been sent out, um, previously, so just bear with me while I, I'm going to have to open it up because it's actually not in the presentation. Um, and I I don't know if it's going to add too much more to what we've already discussed. A- as far as what what the picture could look like going forward, but I will put it up on the screen for everybody if you just bear with me one moment.
Sarah, while you do yours, I'm going to, I'll just do the revenue, our revenues even easier on what we're projecting because, uh, it, it's, uh, it's based on what the tax rate is. I mean, our our other revenues are, uh, all right, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, revenue, again, because revenue with, uh, I mean, the restricted, we don't know, we're doing assumptions, we're basing it on on a solid. We have no way of predicting increased revenue at this point other than a tax rate increase or some other new funding source coming into play. So to put other numbers other than a flat line across for the three years would be disingenuous. So we are, we are working from there, and then those increases will be based on each year. But that's our projection, and we've done it in the past the same way. It's based on unknown, so we're just going with the zero at this point. So that's, that's the three year projection on revenues. Sarah?
Okay. Okay, I'm hoping that one came up. It's on my my other monitor. So is that up correctly?
That is.
Okay, so, and I I want to, I want to caution though right off the bat, so this was done as of November fifth. And this, uh, this was the last one that was presented to both school committee and sent over to the town. So you'll see at the bottom that I have, um, sports and clubs that are, would be an add back. We already added those back in the twenty one twenty two budget. So, um, you know, you can kind of disregard some of those numbers at the bottom there and just focus on, you know, that the projected change in surplus line going across, um, you know, across. So, again, this is looking at a level funded appropriation for FY twenty twenty one, and I level funded that out through twenty twenty four. Not knowing again what would happen and level funded state aid as well. State aid typically goes up and down, up one year, down the next. So, but in in the same predicament as Mr. Wazika, the the revenue is the most hard to predict right now. So, but the projected change in surplus and it should say change in deficit. It is not a favorable picture at this point in time.
So if if I'm reading this correctly, Sarah, in the twenty two proposed budget, there's a three point nine million dollar deficit and that jumps to seven point six million the following year, then eight million the next year. Is that correct?
Correct. If there's no changes on the revenue side. You know, I mean, I would like to think that something is going to increase either state or local, um, you know, and we're already looking at a potential change in FY twenty twenty one revenue. And this was an early projection. We've updated, you know, we didn't just do a revenue or just an expenditure projection. We typically try and do a whole budget. It's hard to look at just one half of the, half of the equation. So yes, you know, with revenue staying consistent, expenditures are going to increase. Uh, there, there's really truly no, no way around that, even if we don't change operations. You still have annual increases just from outside vendors, just from utilities, uh, you know, and then you have the healthcare and whatnot, and then your contractual obligations on top.
Thank you. Any members of the council have questions now that we see this slide? I can't see everyone's hand, so.
There's still a blank here, his hand up.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Just a quick question on, uh, employee benefits. It looks like employee benefits from FY twenty two to FY twenty three jumped about one point eight million dollars and then came back down for FY twenty four. Is there any specific reason for that significant jump?
Am I on mute? Hold on. Oh, I thought I was on mute. So initially, I thought that we were going to be looking at a potential rise in healthcare in that area. we were gonna be looking at a potential rise in healthcare in that area. So, one of the concerns that we had, Mr. Levis said, I think that the healthcare next year will probably be stabilized because it'll be based off of our working claims from this fiscal year. There is a chance, if we see a spike in claims next year, that the following year's working rates will have to be bumped up higher to cover those projections, which is really like, almost like the bubble of the post-COVID scenario. Um, the benefits I will probably revise as we get a couple months in. You know, we're usually around eight months worth of claims. We have a better prediction model. Um, so that was kind of the, the mindset that I was going with on that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Other questions before we adjourn? Ms. Ludwig?
Uh, thank you, President Dixon. Um, so, Ms. Mangielli, just to check on the slide you had just shown, that did not include the recent, I think you said it does not include the recent, uh, request, uh, that we're putting out for the referendum in January, correct?
Correct. Right. So, this was done to meet, um, you know, charter requirements to get over projections, a three-year projection to the town. So, this was super early. This was before we brought back, um, sports into the 2021 budget. Um, and yes, this does not include any assumption of a, an additional appropriation coming for this fiscal year.
Okay. Is there a way to get, um, a copy, an updated copy of this, not, not of this slide, but just of this particular deck? It wasn't, um, so President Dixon, this was not in my, in the email that was sent out for what would be on the agenda for tonight? Could we get an email copy of what we've seen?
Um, I don't believe any of us have seen that.
Okay.
So, we had sent this to, we had presented this to the, this particular, um, slide, and, and you're correct, it's not in the slide, uh, in the presentation. When we had come into tonight, we were thinking that it was a high-level 2022 budget. We had done this three-year projection model to meet the, um, charter requirements. So, we had presented this to the school committee at a previous meeting. I had sent it to the town manager and finance director. So, I can definitely send this out to you. Again, this is as of November 5th. I can update it with, um, you know, projections as we go along. That's easy to do, especially, um, you know, until we get that, you know, see what happens with the potential third referendum. This will be, we'll have two scenarios running with the multi-year projections for a little while.
Thank you. And it also, um, it would be helpful to get a copy of the first few slides that Superintendent Levis had mentioned about, I think it, we called them areas to monitor, the risk areas. Um, that, that would also be helpful. Thank you.
We'll share, we'll put this on our website, but I'll also send it directly to the, I'll, I'll share with Mr. Wazika. And Mr. Wazika, you can share with the council, so. I'll send it out to all of them. Thank you. I'll do it, we'll do it right, right at the end of this presentation.
Mr. Leblanc, did I see your hand up?
I had one additional, uh, question. Uh, Ms. Mangielli, uh, so FY 22 was a $3.9 million deficit. FY 23 was a 7.5, and FY 24 was 8.4. Do any of those numbers include COVID-related costs? And if so, um, how much did you include?
So, the only thing that I have in 2022 is, uh, some of the custodial positions right now. Um, so technically, depending on what happens with COVID and how long we need to keep purchasing additional supplies, that would be an additional expense that would come through. Um, one of the benefits, I would say, of having some of our buildings closed probably more often than we had thought, or even classrooms, I don't think we burned through as much of the PPE supplies as we had thought we would. So, um, we did, we are hoping that through this year, we can prepare ourselves to get started for next year with some of those. Um, but that's a definitely a hard one to predict on a go-forward basis.
Understood. I, I just didn't know, uh, for FY 22, uh, because we'd still be dealing with it if it included. And I know there's significant costs associated with COVID, so just wanted to ask the question. Thank you.
And Mrs. Mangielli, I believe that you're gonna submit to us, um, some type of COVID budget?
Yes. So, I'm working on updated projections of where we've been, uh, to date this fiscal year. You know, what's gonna happen with the next stimulus package, um, how that will impact Coventry specifically, um, is something that we're waiting on. You know, we have heard that it looks like we'll have two years to spend those funds. So, um, hopefully we can use what we need to cover this fiscal year and, and set as much aside for next year to prepare for next year as well. But yes, I will be sending an updated COVID budget as well.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Um, we've had what I would consider to be a very full discussion. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Murray?
Uh, just quickly, I, I know we don't typically get other outside revenue sources, but this came to mind, um, because there was this discussion on solar the other night and, and revenue generation outside. It would be typical taxable income, and that's also for the school side. We're gonna be potentially getting a net metering in the future. Um, does any of this roll that in? Energy savings, revenue generated in future fiscal years?
I have not accounted for that yet because we are waiting on some finalizations, um, for that. So, Mr. Levis, I don't know if you want to speak more to that, but for right now, I do not have anything included.
And on the revenue side, the same way. I, I prefer to have it before I, I stop projecting it out. And at this point, I mean, we're probably going to see how much it's gonna be, probably $100, $150,000. I mean, which is a lot of money, but it's a drop of what we're looking for.
Yeah, I mean, I would, you know, and that's a separate discussion, but you probably, probably wanna bank that outside operational budget for specific items. That's all.
I, again, the, but my, my goal would be to dedicate all of that to capital if the council sees fit. Again, and that revolving where it's going to both sides. So, that's what I would like to do. And again, hopefully the council will agree with that.
Yeah, that may be the discussion we would like to have too, uh, Sarah, for the future. But, um, that's another time, another place. I just, uh, just trying to get a sense of if there's anything outside pilots, things like that that may not be projected. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Last call for questions, comments, concerns?
I just want to say thank you to everybody. I, I appreciate the opportunity and, uh, to, to come together. And, um, like I said, I, I look for it. I, I think all we need to bring to the table, I would say, is just willingness. So, I appreciate everybody's support and, uh, working together. Again, it's not just about the schools. It's not, it's about the town as a whole. So, I just want to say thank you.
And I think it's a good omen that we're be ending one year with a joint meeting, and we'll be getting the next year very soon with another joint meeting. So, that's all good. Um, Mrs. Patno, you ready to close your meeting?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Um, I would like to adj, I would, could we have a motion to adjourn? It looks like 7:39.
Um, Chair, make a motion to adjourn, uh, at 7:39 PM.
I second the motion.
And could we have a roll call, please? Um, Mrs. McDonald?
Kathy Patnod?
Yes.
Lee Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Okay, Happy New Year to all. May I have a motion from a member of the town council to adjourn our meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Second. Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Ian Dixon?
Yes.
Bennet F. Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Kimberly Shoffley?
Yes.
Motion passes. We are adjourned at 10:40. 7:40. I'm making mistakes on time. We adjourned at 7:40. Thank you all for joining us. It was a pleasure seeing you all this evening. And, uh, we'll be together in just a few more days. Take care.
Happy New Year. Happy New Year, everyone.
See you next year.
Happy and healthy New Year.